If it's gone.
Margaret, let's just.
Okay, let's start the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. And welcome to tonight's committee. It's just gone seven o'clock. I don't believe we're broadcasting live. It's good audio, but it may be being recorded. It's like all the new members, the committee and council as well. And I'd like to just thank you to the previous voice, the previous chair of the great she did an excellent job and the committee with her in control. I hope to continue in that state. And it's like the actually Tom, who's the new vice chair of the committee before two working with Tom. So with those introductions over, let's progress with the agenda. Any okay. We have any declarations of interest? Do we have any other declarations of interest? Okay. And being done, we'll move on to item three, public participation. We have one speaker tonight, Crystal. You've got allocation of five minutes speaking. Margaret will keep an eye on that. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, Chris.
Right, I'll come there as quick as I can. So my name is Crystal. I am the I had my first lot in plot in December 2008, about 12 years ago. And then I took on the site of North of Grove Alotments from 2013, which I still hold today. And that included almost five years as the allotment forum chairman. I've noticed the change in this committee since through his initiation, newcomers quickly come to understand the issues that are at stake here. So why am I here? Because I believe and feel that I have both a duty and responsibility to the 100 plus plot holders. So I represent being approximately 12 and a half percent of the plot holder cities. My understanding of these reports, the council and the NAS one, is that the council commission commission the NAS report gives them the evidence to address the perceived problem of the forum, which I believe the council should have been able to deal with in liaison with the site reps without the need for an expensive independent review. Overall, I find both reports quite disappointing. The NAS was commissioned to undertake a comprehensive review of allotment provision in the city, but much seems to be missing in that it doesn't really provide an analysis of the problem of the forum. The fact that the council seems to have allocated its responsibilities by withdrawing its attendance for a meeting seems to be totally ignored. It is also especially disappointing that the promised presentation by the NAS side reps before has not yet taken place. I ask if it ever will. The NSA report makes sweeping statements, the end of the systems currently in place managing directly sites are not working. This may well be so, but they remain unclear as to what and why. This is not the experience of point of delivery where feedback from my tenants of Grove tells me that they think our site is well run and where problems do arise, they are resolved quickly and usually without the involvement of council officers. But they explain something. And that they are generally very happy with the site and the way it's run and its overall condition. There are a number of fundamental elements missing from these reports. These include any evidence, a clear understanding of what is or was the intended role roles of the site reps originally now and in the future, and why they were ever introduced in the first place. What also missing is what is or was the intended role of the forum originally for now and in the future? If you reference the NAS report, option one, there is no detail as to the significant change that they think they needed or the role that the council would have to take or the problems they believe they have identified. It is impossible to comment further, whilst the full report continues to be upheld. If I have asked for it, but they're confused, then they will answer their questions. I feel this fundamental understanding matters fully by all parties and stakeholders for any real progress we can make. Without this, we are in danger of implementing change for change's sake and risk throwing the baby out of the bath. What is the site rep's role and why was the site rep's role created in the first place? Briefly, to take the burden of day to day trigger off the council. Do we wish to lose this and go back and retrogress? The site reps are our site holders' representatives, not some non-near lack of council. There's been experience where the council seems to think they run the site reps. We are simply their eyes and ears on the site to advise and help them do their job when they are back at the site. We try to make life a bit easier and less stressful for the council. The site rep's volunteer activities are very much secondary. And however useful to the council, they are secondary to the plot holders' representative role. What is the forum's role and its distinction between it and the site reps? The forum is simply the collective of the site reps. To pretend otherwise is anything but nothing else but disingenuous. The forum is not the separate body of site reps. It is not a thing that's turned right, it's not a conduit or an intermediary body. It is the talking shop, baking chamber, whose role can only properly be fulfilled by holding rank and duty in the capital of South and elected site rep. The recent conception of its role as the heart of current problems has led to site rep disenfranchisement. I really need a couple more minutes, I can. Andy, may I? While the consideration is not working, at the October meeting of this committee, it was stated by one of the members that all was well until about three years ago, but now it's all gone wrong with program. I agree it has all gone sadly downhill since the state, since the service was taken over by a speed team a couple of years ago. That what worked before should be able to work again and without too much effort. The council frequently maintain it as working in partnership with us, but rarely meet we rarely meet them in forums and discuss the day to day matters of mutual interest. I and other site reps simply feel disenfranchised and appreciated. What is not working in the council site rep plot holder relationship is the application of council's responsibilities to meet with us. And I just I believe very much root cause of our problems. It has led to the disenfranchisement of the site rep in a current unsatisfactory chaos situation. This has been compounded by the forum effectively becoming fun when it was rather unilaterally arbitrarily suspended in January this year. We've had no meetings since January, since November or six months ago. I'd like to recommend that recognition of the allotments is a city resident service, a leisure service, and not an operational problem to be done. I'd like to ask that you review the council department responsible for allotments, something more than elected services, by clearly agreeing to where we used to be. I'd like to ask why option one was rejected. I believe that the current arrangements and structure are much the recommended. I would like to forward to the poser, option one be reconsidered in detailed discussion with the site reps before the council embarks on what surely must be the more expensive option of bringing in full time lot office officer. Generally, this whole issue appears to lack any in-depth analysis and strategic thinking by the council and could still be resolved by holding serious discussions with the site reps. Meanwhile, option two looks to be retrogressive, complicated and potentially expensive and difficult for staff. What really are its business benefits? What were they? How could they be cost effective? What's going to be the impact on plot rental fees and how long will it take to implement? In summary, the option one may currently be thought to be too difficult to embrace. I personally have option two, who prove to be much more simple, requiring too much new and too many changes, far more than option one could possibly require. On the agenda, item two, I note that the task to finish group work appears to be concluded. I would like to recommend that that point is completely rethought and the things we planned altogether. The next stage, the understanding, is to include discussion of the whole report of the council's future plans with the site reps referencing Phil Gilmore, the 17th man who thought of this and hoped that this should apply about line will be discussed in great detail. And the full NAS report will be made available to us so we're properly informed. We're going to work in partnership. You can't keep half the game secret. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Grace, and we'll make sure we get a response from officers. If you want to, you've got your speech typed out.
I have, I can.
I've got a couple of patterns though. I'll tie it up like on the emergency. Yeah, we'll give that to me. I'm sure it's not exactly. Item four, the minutes from the previous meeting. Do we have any comments, amendments, issues? Richard?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. The minutes are accurate, but those are just initial charges. I'm going to write on the minutes, which is 13:30. It's the end of the business about the line of things. I'm going to be more than a little bit distracted. It's been given a long time now. Such regulars and councils, eventually, perhaps, but last year. And it's been 13 minutes. And why I'm connected and still the average recognition now to move forward. It's quite a symbol of that. To let us sign with some education and information about what happens in areas where we have a big use of on the environmental area, my area, my board, of course, the law group, the areas. So I see that we need to make this much further. Second chance in the next meeting, where will we report on this forward? It's been postponed now and hand back first for a long time.
Through you, Chair. Thanks, Council, for those comments. We almost got a report to this committee. And we have when 95% developed and we will work with Chair to see whether we share that pride in the next committee or whether we bring a formal report to committee for for information and for approval. But that will be considered, the thinking is anyway.
Thanks, Chair. On page three of the minutes, which covers the item one, the environmental sustainability strategy. At the end of the final paragraph, it says that it was agreed that the environmental sustainability officer would put together a report regarding the impact of the actual kind of carbon emissions. The actual sentiments of the conclusion of that discussion was that that would come to this committee meeting. So I'd like the minutes to get updated if possible, Chair. Do that to know where we might. If perhaps the next committee meeting, we could see that report.
I can think of a big chair and that's the opposite.
Best comments, I think, actually, the two amendments. Sorry, I'll sign off the minutes as accurate. Now, item five, the business is a review of delivery and management of allotments. And so it's gone. I'm going to pass over to Bill Gilmore, my editor. So let's take that one. Say it's good.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everybody. Could just make one comment. There was some background noise. I think it was by the administrators trying to fix the microphone. So some of what was said previously was hard to hear. So just so that when we're getting feedback, we can hear. Okay, so thank you very much for that. As you know, can you hear me clearly, by the way?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. As you know, from the from the report, last year it was decided that to hold a fundamental review of the allotment service and to consider what works well within the allotments. And also more importantly, to work out, to work through what doesn't work well and what can be improved. At the October committee, it was agreed that we would involve a third party organisation, somebody who has a lot of experience and knowledge of allotments and that they would come and do an independent review so that we can obviously get an independent view of how the allotments are performing with a view to to making improvements going forward. So that aim, we engage with the National Allotment Society, NAS. And Colin and Liz are joining us from the NAS to go through the report that you've got at page 11 and to give us an overview of the work that they undertook and the findings from that work. So if I can hand over to Liz, that would be great.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you for inviting us to this meeting, Phil. I will just say that I couldn't really hear very much of what was said there. So it might be a little difficult when the questions arise. I just hope Colin is hearing more than I am because it's very muffled sound which is coming across. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Good. Right, so my name is Liz Bunting and I'm the legal and operations manager of the National Allotment Society. Joining us today is Colin Bedford, who is the NAS mentor from the West Midlands. And we were both part of the team that was involved with the review. We've got, we have got a lot of experience of allotments. We've got over 90 years, actually, not me personally, but certainly, you know, the organisation, the society has. We've been advising allotment associations and local authorities and landowners through two world wars and now a pandemic. So we were asked by Worcester City Council to produce a comprehensive review of the allotments in the city. And this was carried out in February and March of this year and included the 23 direct let sites and the two self managed sites. So this was not just a desk exercise. The methodology used included site visits to all 25 sites, online surveys, direct let, self managed and the site representatives. And we also did Zoom meetings, nine, nine two hour Zoom meetings with site representatives, forums, executives, self managed committee and councillors from the task force, Finnish group and council offices as well. We reviewed all documentation and we carried out a benchmarking exercise against six other councils with similar sized allotment provision. Also, we spoke to other organisations in and around Worcester who could contribute in various ways to allotment life and development. We looked at the governance aspects, data and performance. And all this information was then evaluated and good practice options put forward within the report. Findings, the key key findings, really, the two self managed sites were working very well. There was a strong community spirit coming across, good communication and with a high percentage of of plot holders reporting that the self management improvements were really positive. With the direct let sites, there was no real coherent management message coming through at all. And it looked as though there were failings within the operational aspects of the forum, which had become dysfunctional. There was little transparency and poor communications. So I mean, that fact that it involved 23 sites proved to be the main issues to be remedied within that that aspect. The site representatives appeared to be very successful in their own sphere, capable, well meaning individuals with a good deal of enthusiasm for the sites. So again, a positive result. With regard to water harvesting, I think that that came across in evidence, really, that there was little actually going on. And that would, that aspect would save Worcester City Council a significant amount of money by educating plot holders and encouraging them to harvest their own rainwater. Composting, education and encouragement again would be advantageous. And there was a sound basis there, which was evident for biodiversity. The Wildlife Trust and the Worcester Environmental Group recognised how allotments provide corridors for wildlife. So again, to be pursued and encouraged. We put forward those six options, all of which are operational in other parts of the country. And NAS have experience of advising and assisting local authorities with these options. I'll just quickly run through those so that Worcester City Council stay as they are with significant changes with option one. Option two, to appoint a full time allotment officer. Option three, for Worcester City Councils to take back the allotments totally in house. Option four was to adopt self management. Option five, construct, sorry, contract out to an independent contractor. And option six, to have a limited company who manage the allotments on their behalf. Now, what I will do tonight, I concentrate on one, two, touch on three and also mention four, five and six do appear to have been discounted, really. So option one, stay as as you are with significant changes. We could see the purpose of a forum, examine the forum operation and makeup, but feel that that allotment could be cut forum could become a consultative group. This would involve more involvement from Worcester City Council, taking a greater ownership of management and the forum in that case would take on an educational role, enhancing the experience for the community. Option two was to appoint the appointment of an allotment officer. And this would be a dedicated experienced person. Site representatives probably still necessary because that would provide a liaison between the allotment holders and the council. An experienced officer would be able to obviously take charge of managing the waiting list, administer the legal agreements, deal with inspections on a regular basis, serve notices, assess risks on site, financial monitoring, advise on planning policy and liaise with the public health sector and also develop and monitor green initiatives and assist with capital bids for site improvements, ensure benchmarking continues and support, supervise the the site representatives, including induction training. So this would encompass the duties which are currently spread across the present department. And obviously, costs vary with with the degree of experience of the person that you would be taking on in that option. Option three, have many of the aspects of option two, but with no forum or site reps and two dedicated persons to administration backup. Option for self management. That option gives the to be able to achieve a cost neutral service. Two sites are already proving that the self management works there. Many variation, there are many variations of self management. And it gives the responsibility to the associations and reduces the council expenditure. So but you must still keep in contact. That is absolutely vital. With regard to the aspects that you need to consider, there could be substantial costs involved. There would need to be site audit, take it site audits taking place as part of the preparatory work. Survey of the sites to determine the condition of them. And it gives the option of the team teamwork and mutual benefits. It's necessary to have robust agreements and to ensure the capability of the people who are running the site. It's really localism in action and volunteers take on that, those management arrangements. And the council in those instances generally only deal with one person and the site can attract its own funding and therefore improve site facilities. So there are advantages there as well. And I think that concludes, if anybody's got any questions, hopefully Colin will be able to hear.
Thank you very much for that. So I'd like to floor to any questions and one way or another, we'll get them through. Okay, I've just been advised that we're going to ask Phil Gilmore to just wrap up first and then we'll get to his questions.
Okay, thank you again, Chair. It was fair to say as well, so thank you, Liz, for that and thank you for the report. To say that within the report, there are other elements that are non governance and that we are taking on board and we'll be looking to improve on. Things like biodiversity, water usage, site improvements. These are all things that have been identified within the report that we'll also be looking at. So like I say, thank you to Liz for that. In terms of the actual options, we reviewed the options for governance. We considered which offered the best options for improving the current situation at the most cost effective way. And we reported to task and finish with our report. And as such, we would like to offer the recommendations as follows and as seen in the report. Recommendations are that the the committee notes the contents of the report and the findings of the National Allotment Society. That they note that the allotment task and finish endorsement to progress further work in respect of option two. And that is the council to appoint a dedicated allotments officer and would reduce roles for the forum and site representatives. That doesn't mean that there are no roles. We want to engage with those bodies to ensure, you know, to ensure that they're actively participating in going forward. And we are, as part of our consultation following this, we are going to be seeking their views on how best to do that. But that we that you direct officers to undertake further work, including engagement with the stakeholders and interested parties. And finally, that you know that a further report for a decision will be presented to the committee in July 2021, dealing the outcomes of this work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to, before we do, just want to reiterate some of the points Phil made. He's wrapping that there and just to remind us how this started and what we're trying to achieve. There we are. You know, the route that we're going down is to invest in the allotment sites to improve how we take it, to make them fit the purpose in terms of the site security and some physical aspects of the site. And also improve and maintain the environmental sustainability of the site. We want to make sure that they play a role in in figuring out climate and biodiversity. And and also that they're being used to the maximum so that as a rare resource that they be used as best as possible for residents of Worcester. And so what we're sort of suggesting, recommending in the paper is it's going down the path where we're not just going to invest, we're going to invest in capital investment into the allotments, but also in additional officer support to help. but also in additional officer support to help with the effective running of the allotments. And certainly, in my mind, the officer that we're talking about, the person here, would be taking on the, I'm trying to use the right words, would be taking on more unpleasant tasks that perhaps the sort of sense of doing more conversational tasks. If they're having to enforce some rules to make sure that sites are being used to their best potential. And the task and interview group, I think we did discuss these options at length and presentations from the House of the Report. And I think some of the members of the task and interview group can contribute this evening. Because obviously we've lost a couple of the members that are not with our committee. But we said, you know, and said that this was the, that we thought was the best way forward. So on that note, I was thinking that before, and to you, Richard.
Yes, thank you Chair. On the term of the task and finish, we did a really good job of progressing forward with the recommendations which appeared. And I might have to admit the recommendations which are on page five are a lot better. And I think it's worth saying that no change to the allotment system, there was no option. There's going to have to be an adjustment, not the announcements of the forum. But the way ahead, I think we've done gradually and with the consent of the people involved, and not a change imposed upon them, but we actually take the people with us, I think that is absolutely critical. The consultation and how we move forward, it's going to be key and vulnerable, it's going to be very important. But I do believe that in the past few years, we as a council have had to take some of our responsibility and handle the roles and some of those responsibilities to site representatives, which have not been in the best, in the best of counts or the right of the status. And I can see that that needs to be brought back into house. I think the forum will have to continue in some style and some way in the future. And the site reps, and the site reps will also have to continue in some style and some way in the future. But that role now has to be clearly defined, so everyone understands what that role is, including the site reps that do all the lotment to have a fun. And I think there is a direct link now, potential to be established, between the allotment holders and this committee. Something which can be acted as a form of liaison between the members of the council, taking an active part in the management process. So I think we as a group of members should stop acting as a consequence of the fun. I have a vision of something like the same, that's going to be a great way of meeting. We're represented together, we're represented to the council and we're going to minutes to this committee, which will give us, give us insight into issues, which are important to a lot of the others. You can actually start the process of all and change, just what you need to remember are concerned about. I think we are, we have to move ahead, no change is not an option. This is a change that's going to be gradual and I think it's going to be the most effective, both the council and the lotment holders. Ultimately, long-term, and I mean very long-term, I'd like to see some options on those around the site. I'm a cooperative, I believe that people work with the science together, the others, to actually achieve the best results. And so naturally I would support that. I don't think we're ready to make it to Worcester. I mean, it's a longer way to go before we get there. And I think what we've suggested here is start the process and start the journey and I would win. That would be your suggestion.
Thank you for that question, Richard. And certainly, I think there's a lot of passion in lot of that sense. I think Chris is nice or representing that passion and what the lotment has, and certainly nothing's going to be cheap if we don't work together on this. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, I wouldn't go in on that because some of the points have been covered. But the NAS report, Bill just said the importance of the people issue. And we've already, it would probably be the way you give our forum in our, it's shut down. And I hope that when we do the final, and then just like we've got, it will be proper. And making the point that allotments are something that we want to provide a value, not something that has to go around. Now, I was going to say that the, when I had a relationship with the forum, it's not as it's being described. It's being described as a gatekeeper rather than a conduit. But I have to say from some of this, and I've found the evidence is that what you found is correct. It's on the wrong one. No more, longer functions for the benefit of the lotment. But I still have concerns, Richard talked about the site reps. The paper implies a reduced, a reduced role for the site reps. Now, I can see absolutely that we've got in this weird position where they're assuming that this is the worst sort of setup. They want to manage their sites and see if they're going, okay, I've got that. So I think if you're going to go to option two, in a way you're going to enhance the role of the site reps. You're going to give them more, and you can say it like a corner, but it might be that those site reps decide to reach the corner. It's not within, you know, it's not supposed to reach that. But that's, that probably my initial sort of, my main concern about the paper as written so far, that I don't think that the bereavement thing is entirely appropriate. Anybody's been on the bereavement certificate, they'll have it entirely appropriate. And the goals thing, what a success that's been. So I forget that. So there is a model that does that type of, so my plea is, one, build up the environment thing at the top. And the people think, oh, Tom, recognise that site reps are not just their property, but their court. And get the right evidence, because if you know that this is going to be an opposite, dealing with X number of individual plot holders, that difficult.
Thank you, Andy. I do agree about the site rep, I think it is changed rather than, which is rather than maybe focusing more on positive things rather than this sort of thing.
I've got my point of fact, Robins here, he can speak to it better. When we talk about these allotments, we've also got a parish council, which has got an excellent allotment system. That's not what we want, what you paint that now.
Thank you. Neil?
Can you hear me? Please sit. Yeah, just a couple of comments before I get any questions. On 25th May, and I'm an allotment holder of 20 years, sent an email to several councillors, myself, and complaint that they've not been part of the, well, not been able to contribute to the report that's been summarized this evening. I just felt obliged to raise that, that I'm too hard on. Second comment is going to 3.10 on page seven. And it seems to me a validation, recommendation one, which has been given a very powerful endorsement by the participant speaker this evening. I'll just read the first sentence. Retaining the forum would seem a pretty sensible approach resulting from the view. And it seemed that the role of the forum and its membership applies refreshingly. It seems very sensitive sentence to me. And it does seem a validation of option one. So the question is, can the recommendation one and two on page five? You're not going to like saying this, but can it also work by officers on option one as well as option two? Appreciate that extent as we live, but I think the speech that we just heard has been very powerful and somebody's actually involved in the comments. And some of what Richard and the council unit also said, also seems to me, can support option one have some intention. So the question is, can the recommendation one and two be amended effectively to complete an investigation of option one as well as option two? Rather than us simply just say, yeah, let's go to option two.
Thank you. Chair, I think the, thank you, Chair, for your thoughts. And I think the answer is, is hopefully in the report, in that we've tried to reassure everybody around the future role of the forum and the future of the site reps. And Phil mentioned about engaging with all stakeholders moving forward. But I think fundamentally, based in question of the options, is the council, as council unit mentioned, of taking responsibility, taking all responsibility off and having a delegated source. At the moment, I acknowledge and recognise another word that Mr. Bob said, you know, and a lot of the others. But we have one, we did a job to be able to relate to. And so first, a fundamental change is option two. And it is the council having a delegated source to be able to work with the forums and the site reps to have a lot of problems. That's the reason why it's been created, hopefully the report gives a sense that the forum is the one that's directed. Sorry, the council staff, but it's about rekindling the function of roles and responsibility.
Did you want to say something else?
I thought I said more to catch the focus at the first, but it's deeper. Thank you, John Roy. In the meantime, while this investigation is running to option two, with a G2 presentation report at committee in July, can I simply ask that a measure to be given to the forums in their current state that they will be very much part of the lotment management in the future? Because I'm believing from that one, it was only that, that there's a feeling among some of the lotment holders that they're not part of this process. So my question is simply, can I give intention to the lotment holders that while this option two being investigated, forums are very much having a place in management for us?
And that only one, you've got to have a big personal dialogue with the individual animals, I think, just to, if she breaks and also to, what comes? How different place the promise, you know, perhaps has some connection with, possibly on top of it. And going forward, and especially, this is the staff, so after this evening, we need to communicate and be able to keep touch actually. So I think that for sure, for sure.
I'm going to talk a little bit, I'm not that option with that. As so many of you said, the task and the nature of it is involved in a lot of things, that's a hot ball. I think it's important to recognise that Chris is here tonight, representing himself, not representing the lotment, not representing the forum. So these points are valid, but I think, you know, it's, we don't have a chair for one bit. We don't have other site reps here to discuss their issues. And I think one thing that did come out of the NAS meetings that we had and the report was that the forum and the site reps, they do even, actually, they do have several site reps who have been in place for a long time, there's no regular connections. And there is, there has been a bit of a culture of bullying and harassment. And I do think that there has to be some sort of setback of the site reps and the forum and have them as, you know, to do the more social perspective of allotmenting, not to deal with the business of, you know, tenants in the news chasing people for rent repayments, you know, doing health and safety stuff. That has to be done by the council, that has to be done by the site reps by councillors. Because if we only, if we are the man, the city council, it's not. The site reps are, do not go to the city council. And they are volunteers who choose to do it. Some site reps are a lot more active than others, and this is one of the more active site reps. Others just want to go out and grow their convention and get on the bike and don't want to be bothered by things. So there's a huge disparity across sites as a result of that. But what I do see, that no volunteer in the business of being site rep to do is to be the person that's chasing people and who's the person who's doing the job of the council. So it is about each setting, actually, remotely valid, it's just not a viable thing to do. Things have to change, we can't just go back because it's been three or four years ago. It was three or four years ago, but things changed essentially, the council changed and so we can't go backwards.
I think again, I wanted to, I wanted to agree broadly with what Neil said. And follow some content that I've had on for six years, and I didn't contribute so much. So I agree with Tyler, that he's on bringing up the long talk. I had my orders thrown off and done with it. Excellent. So Chris, the council regulations don't allow any more contribution of what you're stopping. Sorry, may well, yeah, can't that, fully contribute to this stage. I don't know if anyone nearest from NASS or the board will be annoyed about the communication that has been done. Because there was, that's in page three, bottom of the table.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for this, for raising that. I will refer to colleagues at NASS probably in the first instance, just to be assured as to the communication challenge of the law, you know, to have mentioned that as well. But now that members have raised that, I would ensure that when we go into the next part of the agreement subject to approval of this report, and we look into why all members in the seats and communication, make sure we rectify that. Right, with the colleagues from NASS and the common first, I'll come up to share with Phil.
Do you want Liz to comment? Okay. Yeah.
So, sorry, I didn't hear that.
We can hear you, yeah.
The, sorry, the sound quality is abysmal.
Okay, I'm not sure there's anything more that we can do. So is that Colin who just spoke?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Right. Could I communicate with Colin and Liz? Because I think I heard.
Okay, Colin, we can hear, Colin, we can hear you.
Yes, but we can't hear the council committee.
Okay.
I think I heard both sides, if you would like me to communicate with Colin.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Basically, basically, just a statement on the evidence, making it possible for us as well.
Yeah, Vortige, yeah, the sound quality for your end is not great. Colin, a number of points were raised about the communication with plot holders and a number of plot holders indicating that they hadn't been involved or contacted.
Okay. Okay to respond?
Yeah.
The intent was never to communicate directly with plot holders. That would just be an exercise that, well, data protection won't give us details to allow us to communicate. We had weekly meetings with the council officers or officer, Guy Powell. And I provided a fortnightly bulletin to start with, up to the stage where we had got no further information really to report. So I'm not quite sure what was required that we weren't giving. I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure on the question.
Excellent. Well, I'm going to say, thank you, Chair. I probably repeat myself, but we make sure that at the next stage, we'll have a check and ensure that we're releasing details, not just forum members or site reps, but all of them as well. And we explore, and we make sure that we, we don't check. but pot holders as well, and we explore, and we make sure that we, we don't check, which is what we've got, and often, to pay a bonus, and it's a really broad case, and for any of the, if we can, if we can, I suppose.
Okay, do we have any more contributions on the slide? Richard?
Just, just briefly to say that I welcome all some other parts of process, and want to make sure that that is happening. And we're, and really, you know, looking at that option, so it is an enhancement of option one, it's something to do with option one, we want on living, and it gives us the elements we had previously, plus a bit more of the, the, the officer. So I don't think there's anything to clear in the proposal you've got before us today, but there's something which is missing from the report, which was discussed at the, at the task and finish bridge, I'm not sure whether this is the right place or process to, to raise it, which was a request to send some information to the planning committee regarding potential developments in a city where there's a property of more than 1,000 running for the envelope, at least 20 allotment sites should be included within it for planning there. So some of which we did request to be sent to the planning committee for further action, and to make sure that that was potentially included with development science across the city. Clearly, there is some great demand for allotments, there's waiting lists on the order sites, and there are people wanting a new allotment. We haven't got enough spaces, we don't have enough allotments, demand is high, and the, the availability is low, so we need to get more allotments coming, and the only way we can do this is through the order sites. But we do need to ask the planning committee for that kind of response, if possible.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. Okay. We're all finished, are we? Happy then, oh, sorry, sorry. And, yeah, first of all, I'd just like to report the last point, Chris. Um, but, but, that's just, just to make the point, that if allotment holders feel aggrieved that they've not heard anything about this process up until now, that rather does suggest that site representatives have not communicated perhaps as well as they should do. And I think that supports the position that we seem to be taking in favour of option two. But site representatives can't be expected to do everything, but having somebody who's responsible to the county directly involved can only be an improvement. Thank you, Simon, I mean, in fact, this is, this is an investment in the allotments of it, we're, we're, we're suggesting here, so, if we have no more contributions, we happy then to note the recommendations as laid out in the report. So moving on now to item six, the, which is a, a national resource waste strategy for England, so these consultations that have come from central government, the, the city council, in, in consultation with the waste collectors and the waste authority are responding to. And so we have some recommendations on, on the paper, and I, I won't read them, and we'll pass over to Bill to introduce this item.
Okay, thank you again, Chair. There is a presentation to help support the report, so I guess that's going to be played from your end.
If, yeah, if you've, if you've got the presentation put around the table, let's see if I can, I will try and get it up, we're just waiting.
Andy, if you would just excuse me, I tend to leave, I don't think you might be interested.
Okay. Well, I think that the, um, some, yes.
Indeed, thank you. Can I just thank you all?
Okay, Phil, you should be able to see the presentation up on the screen.
Okay, thank you. So as the Chair mentioned, the, the government has brought out three consultations as part of the National Resource and Waste Strategy for England 2018. Next slide, please. So the aim of this consultation, and the, the aim of the National Resource and Waste Strategy, is to help achieve a more circular economy, and to increase the segregation treatment of waste streams, and it's aimed at a new target of recycling of 65% of municipal waste by the year 2035. And the Environment Bill is legislation for delivering this strategy, and the three consultations are Extended Producer Responsibility, this has a submission deadline of next week, as does Deposit Return Scheme consultation. And then the third consultation, which was held back and has only recently been issued, is Consistency in Recycling Collections, and that looks at the materials and methods of segregation, it looks at separate weekly collection of food waste from all households, and consideration as to free garden waste services being provided. So, next slide, please. So Extended Producer Responsibility is aimed at packaging, so that, that can be cardboard, it can be containers, it can be bottles, it can be glass, it can be plastics. And, and it's based on the producer pays principle, and, and is looking for local authorities to be able to recover their full net costs of providing collection and processing services. And it will be benchmarked, and, you know, local authorities will be required to produce, provide, should I say, efficient and effective services, and, and only incur necessary costs. The, the consultation itself has 104 questions, these are mainly aimed at producers, and how the scheme should be administered, what, what material should be in and out of a producer responsibility. But there were five key chapters with 30 questions for local authorities. And the Waste Partnership response is relatively positive, has concerns over payments will be made, but sees it as, as a sort of revenue stream to local authorities for, in the main providing services that already exist, albeit dependent on, on the consultation, we could be asked to provide additional collection facilities, or to take in additional materials. So that's, that's the Extended Producer Responsibility on packaging. Next slide, please. Deposit Return Scheme, again, the aim is to increase recycling, the, the quality of it, the quantity, and to reduce littering. And it's about, you know, in the schemes like this, used to exist many, many years ago, where deposits paid on a drink container, and then you get the deposit back once you return the bottle, or, or, or the, the container back to the redemption point. And local authorities are going to be able to recover the full net costs. Again, quite a big consultation, 78 questions with four key chapters, and 17 questions that are aimed at local authorities. Previously, the Waste Partnership responded, and most of the city was part of that response, and this was in 2019, and they questioned the need for such a scheme. And the response really is, again, looks like it will be questioned, is there a need for such a scheme, especially given the impact of Extended Producer Responsibility, and the level of recycling collections that go on, on the curbside? So, you know, this is not something that's been openly welcomed. Next slide, please. So, local authority payments as part of the, of the consultation, obviously an important section, because it will determine how we get paid, and how much we get paid to deal with packaging waste. There will be scheme administration that will be appointed, and as I said previously, the broad principles are that it's an efficient and effective service, and that the costs that are expended are necessary costs. Payments are likely to be based on the quality of material that's collected, and, and obviously tonnages of that material, and the scheme administrator will be supporting local authorities to, to meet performance benchmark, and to improve on existing services to obtain full payments. So as I say, this is an area that, that, you know, that most authorities have just got some concern in ensuring that the payments do reflect the true cost of, of providing the services. Next slide, please. So the potential impacts and some of the dates, the local authority payments, as I said, to cover full costs, the impact of Deposit Return Scheme on the existing recycling service, and on the disposal contracts as it currently stands, because, as you know, we, we, we supply our material to the county disposal arrangements, and will still be required to collect the remaining materials. I read within the consultation that the DEFRA calculate that currently 70% of containers are collected by, via curbside recycling, and they estimate that if a Deposit Return Scheme is introduced, 90% of overall material would be collected by the Deposit Return Scheme, and that local authorities will simply collect 7, 70% of the remaining 10%, i.e. so we will drop from collecting 70% of the overall available container stream to 7%, but we'll obviously still provide the full service of collection. The, one of the aims is to reduce littering, so containers on the go is, is one of the aspects that's being considered, and then the hope being that they'll be returned to, to suppliers rather than discarded. The key dates, the draft response was received at the end of last week, the district amendments and the sign-off response is for the end of this week, then the, the county will finalise and circulate responses to the districts, and then it's up to us to upload our responses by the 4th of June. Next slide, please. So the consistency consult, consultation hasn't got to be responded on until July, and it's still being worked up, and, and there's lots of comments and lots of views as to, as to this. And weekly collection of food seems to be a key aspiration of the consultation, and officers from Heritage and Most, Most, Waste Partnership are reviewing the options and the potential implications, both from a carbon perspective and from a cost perspective. And the consultation response really looks against, you know, we look like we're going to be responding, that we're against the introduction of separate food waste collections, that's obviously for, for a decision, and there are concerns about the additional resources, there'll be increased vehicles, the environmental impact of those, and again, it comes back to will true cost recovery be made? Altern, sorry, anaerobic digestion is seen by the government as a more effective way to treat food waste. So what the government's looking to do with weekly collection of food waste is to pull it out of the existing waste stream, to remove it from energy from waste facilities, and from landfill, you know, on a few occasions, waste has gone to landfill, and actually take it to anaerobic digestion to, to generate energy. And source segregated recycling is preferred. Now, anybody who's been to Wales will see that in Wales, people have sort of three or four boxes, they have a little trolley, and, and, and they basically pour each material into a separate box, so glass will go in one box, plastic in another, paper and card in another, so on and so forth, and that's collected in, in smaller vehicles and source segregated out the curbside. However, as much as this has been a preferred option in the past, tea, whether it's technically, environmentally, economically practicable, will apply, and that will mean that the authority will be, will be able to put forward a case to maintain its existing commingled collection service, if it can demonstrate that there is best practice as far as tea is concerned. And just giving overview, commingle collections, similar to what we do, and, and some variations on what we do, are widely operated throughout England, as are the use of material recycling facilities to segregate the waste once it's been collected. So this is a, you know, it's a well-known service and a well-used service, so going to source segregated would be a major change nationally. And next slide, please. And then continuing on the consistency consultation, the, there is a, a view that authorities should consider whether free green waste collections should be, be given. Again, what the government's saying is that this would be a basic level, i.e. one bin every fortnight, and that authorities could charge for additional service, second bins or more frequent collections, but as, as you know, Worcester, we, we, we charged for this service already, so there'd be a loss of revenue. There would be an increase in recycling, because it would move, collective recycling, because it would move a lot of green waste away from household recycling centres, but would obviously increase resources needed to collect from, from virtually every property that was on the scheme. And so, as I say, the Waste Partnership is working on the draft response at the moment, and the approach is to be fed back, fed back to leaders in mid-June. So, so that one in itself is, is ongoing, we're, we're, we're close to completing Extended Producer Responsibility and Deposit Return Scheme. So that's the end of the actual presentation. And, and before we go to questions, if I could just go to the recommendations of the report, that the committee notes the contents of the report, in particular, the, the three policy proposals that are out of the consultation, EPR, DRS, and Consistency in Household Collections, and delegates the corporate director, homes and communities, in consultation with the Chair of the Environment Committee, to review the proposed responsible, responses, when available, because the consistency one won't be available for a week or two, from the Strategic Waste Partnership, and to, to amend these consultation responses as appropriate, and to reflect the views of the city council, and then to approve the submission of the final responses.
Okay, thank, thank you, Phil. So, so in summary, we have these are quite complicated consultations coming through the government, we don't act alone, because we're, we're a collection authority, Worcestershire County Council is the disposal authority, therefore, our, our sort of waste disposal supply chain is, is integrated with the county as, and alongside all the other districts. Of, of, so therefore, the responses in detail are being worked up together, collaboratively with, with the other partners, and what this paper is basically saying, that we're going to look at them and finesse them as they come through, which is normally in, in short time scales. And of the consultations, some of them are relatively straightforward, as in it's suppliers being made to pay for packaging, make juice, or as a collection authority, we receive additional funds, which is the EPR, so that's going to be mainly positive. Positive returns being, is, is more complex, because we've already got a collection service in place, and this will complicate matters somewhat, and has many implications, and then things like the food waste, they're, they're going to happen regardless, and so on, so. I'll, I'll, if anyone's got any questions or, on, on this presentation. Neil.
Thank you, there's a lot, lot positives in this one. Of, of the three listed, in 1.1, and obviously, bullet point three consistently, consistency in household business recycling, is the one that, as a council, we'd have more influence over. And obviously, I've been having in on food waste, as a first rate at this council 2013. And on page four of the report, 5.1, it says a rationale for policies to increase national recycling rates to 65% by 2035. Well, when Chancellor Roberts and I went to the Avondale to have a chat with councillors, council officers, and we discovered that their recycling rate was already in the mid-60s, and that was largely, largely attributed to the fact that they had very successful food waste collection. In around 2010, 2011, Wychelen District Council commissioned a report called Value for Money Waste Service Comparisons, and indeed, a found that South Box, which has a higher recycling rate in the whole country, reinforcing what And indeed, a town in South Box, which has a high recycling rate in the whole country, reinforcing what Chancellor Robertson and I discovered on our visit in 2013, that food waste collections have a relationship with high recycling rates. So it's brilliant to read this in the report that this sixty five percent recycling target is part of national policy. I'm almost done, trust me. I went through the archives in preparation for this meeting and had saved some information provided by people campaigning against the incinerator in Hartlebury, and I know it's a fact now, it exists. But back in the day, they sent myself and other people lots of information. And I just want to hone in on this piece of information. Particularly as at the top of page five, it says obviously a food waste collection would have significant capital and better implications. Well, in relation to that point in the report, this quote from the campaigners is this. Large savings can be made because the separated waste can be treated on the open waste market. Their costs are about a third of incineration. I appreciate this statement was made in early 2010s. But I want to share it in endorsement of the plans to introduce food waste collection. It is cost saver. And if we are here tonight to make a recommendation that you as chair of this committee and the corporate director reflects the views of this council and make a plea tonight to endorse the idea of introducing food waste collections. Primarily because of what you shared tonight, that South Box, you have done it. It's historical, we can do it here. So thank you for presenting the report. I hope that's useful. I hope that you and the corporate director reflect the value of food waste collections and all the other good stuff in this report.
Tom.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for that very comprehensive report, actually, and the explanation and the presentation I found very helpful. I think actually, I wonder whether we would want to tally in some of that version from you. I think it's absolutely right that officers are suggesting that we ask the question of costs and ask how these different initiatives are going to be paid for. Because we all understand we're on a very strong budget for the council. So that's really good. But if you look at, I mean, actually, this slide here, it's not numbered. The slide of the circular diagram is quite helpful. Because if we talk about this extended producer responsibility, this is really about recycling and packaging. And the business diagram that's problematic is it always shows inevitably when you recycle stuff, what do you get when you recycle, it's not as high quality as what you had to produce in the first place. There's always a flow of some new material in which we extract. And there's always a degree of something coming out that is either not as useful as the first article we wanted or has to be disposed of. So this extended producer responsibility takes us towards what we call circular economy, where stuff can be fully reused, but doesn't quite get us there. Now, the beauty of the next bit that gets covered, the deposit return scheme, this idea that you use a bottle and then you give it back and it gets washed and reused, that is circular. You don't lose anything in that process. And the energy you put into washing that bottle is unimaginably less than the energy you put into taking broken glass, separating it, melting it and recycling it. So this DRS, this deposit return scheme, is much closer to the only point we're shooting for than what we can do with this extended producer responsibility on its own. So I challenge the argument that if you're going to do the first, then we don't need to do the second. You do need to do the second. The deposit return scheme is a good thing. If it means we are recycling less waste, yes, we have to think about our own. That's also the question we asked back. We don't say let's not do it. And I had the chance actually to live in Germany for three months where they did this. And it was amazing, but apparently hardly people did, but they did. They put their bottles in the box. They took them back to the supermarket with a metering machine, put their money back and carried on. And it worked remarkably well. So I think we as a council should be supporting DRS even in, even in parallel with ERP, the extended producer, EPR, the extended producer responsibility. Also, I recognise there's a cost question. Like I said, we should be asking those. But when you clean a bottle, that's an awful lot cheaper than you recycling that bottle. That cost saving is available somewhere and a well-designed policy should make it available for us. The last thing I would add is on green waste and food waste. If green waste and food waste doesn't get composted properly or digested properly, what happens is it digests itself anaerobically and that produces methane. Methane is twenty five times worse for the atmosphere for climate change than carbon dioxide is. Whereas if it's properly composted or it's digested in turn to gas that we then burn, it's released as CO2. Now, that will get recycled and matured in our atmosphere because it's green waste. But it's much better, that goes up as CO2 than up as methane. And so actually, we should again be supporting green waste collection and food waste collection as soon as possible. Because the carbon impact is very significant. It seems like a momentary. So I don't know, Chair, what the mechanism would be for us to perhaps present back to officers. Could you reflect on that and reflect that in discussions with the other district councils and maybe move our position that way? Because at the moment, if the proposal is that we note that if we have the if we have the first extended producer responsibility, we don't need DRS. I think actually I would suggest we disagree with that, that both can be complementary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Chair. I'd rather agree with Tom, there's things in here I don't agree with. So what do we do? I mean, the green waste is a real priority. And talking about this circular argument, Monty Don, in a recent programme, said that a garden can possibly produce another compost return need. What we do is we put compost in a bin, have it taken away. And that adds to our recycling rates. Well, there's something cockeyed about the whole thing. That's the last thing we should be doing. We should be encouraging people, and I know the argument, some gardens are too small to have a bin or compost heap. But they're small, they don't produce their back in stock. So there's something a bit wrong there, something. And by the way, I'm very grateful for Neil reminding us about South Box, he's absolutely right. They're a brilliant system now. What they've done is outsourced the whole thing to a private company. And they were resort, absolutely relentless in going out and keeping engaging, not like a council meeting. They just kept going and going and they were successful and something we might consider again. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Richard.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing more to really add to what you already said earlier. And I think I may have noticed a mistake in the recommendations. And I'm thinking about customer practice, but normally our consultation should take place with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Environment Committee. I just wonder why that isn't part of the case in this case, this incident. And whether we can make a small change to go right there. But on the basis of what we just mentioned, I think that would be a valuable contribution.
Thank you, Chair. Based on the recent changes, council leader, we took advice on that recommendation. And we found that was appropriate. I can re, I can re, we have that conversation, which we have got to correct. But that's based on the recent changes.
Louise, can I speak?
Thanks. Yeah, it was just to echo what Neil was saying and then what Tom said and what Andy said. I think the idea of recycling is that we shouldn't be hearing it. Because recycling is not actually a good thing. It won't stop making a lot of things that we don't need. So we want to encourage people to not make packaging. I don't want things coming in plastic trays and wrapped up in lots of things like by the, you know, loops. And because the more you recycle, the less you get out of it, the more energy you waste. As depositing bottles, it's great. It's like in New York, you've got ten cents for every bottle that you return to the bottle bank. I wouldn't disagree slightly with Tom there. I don't know how it works in Germany, but in the States, it doesn't work that well. It's generally easy to collect them so that they can get changed for, you know, chalices for the night or food or other, you know, more various activities. But, you know, I think it's a good thing. The one thing that I would say is food waste collection absolutely needs to be done. I grew up somewhere where food waste was collected from about nineteen ninety-three onwards in Trafford in South Manchester. A lot of people didn't like it at first. They didn't like having the caddies in their kitchen because they started smelling after a few days. But actually, people get used to it now. Everybody does it. But as a council, I think we need to actually really encourage people to not generate that food waste. So have the things there for them, have your green waste collections and food waste collections. But also direct people to learn ways to website, encourage them to do things like home composting, pot beds or Makashi composting, which is fabulous, because then you generate no waste whatsoever. You compost everything, including meat and bones. And those are the kind of things that we should be doing in conjunction with it. So I'd like to see that perhaps as Chair and Vice Chair, you encourage that form of communication with survivors to look at alternate methods to recycling, such as not making the waste to begin with.
Thank you. Sonne.
I think something which would be very helpful to probably nearly everybody in Worcester is to have a detailed description of everything that they can put in their green bin and everything they can't. And to remind them, for instance, not to put dirty pizza boxes in, which completely mess up the whole bin. A lot of people don't know what coloured plastic goes in the green bin, what goes in the black bin, whether tin foil is taken to recycling. These are fundamental questions which I doubt that more than a handful of people in Worcester could get everyone right. So I think we should be pushing for that detailed information to be put in front of everybody in Worcester and to be continuously put in their face. Because anybody who puts in the wrong stuff in the green bin risks fouling up the whole system. It's another question, what happens to it at the end of the day? Come on to that. But I think we need better information.
Thanks, thank you. Those contributions. I certainly agree with most of them. And certainly communications is a, is a very important one. I think sometimes we just think of sending something on Twitter and that's the constant. I think with recycling, it needs to be a continuous process. This time and time again, it's revealing same messages. It is complicated and it's complicated further by packaging, which tells people that it's recyclable when it, it might be theoretical that it's recyclable, but it's very specialist places. And so just want to pick up on some of the things we mentioned. The EPR, the Extended Producer Responsibility, I think one of the benefits of that will be reducing packaging. And also potentially reducing materials and making the materials that are in packaging more likely to be recyclable. So I think the EPR one, that isn't controversial from a council perspective or from that perspective. It's common sense. I think, although food waste was being mentioned, I think, I think that the message coming from the government that it's inevitable, but I think it's not without its complications. Because you're adding an extra collection, so extra vehicles, which is capital cost and aerobic digestives. Which again, that needs to be funded and built. But if we do that, assuming we go down that route, then hopefully be able to use the emission free vehicles for those collection rounds and funding from governments. The green waste, I always struggle with why it's called waste. Green waste, why it's included, it's been some of the stats where we include collections in the brown bins as if it's the same as people recycling plastic and cardboard. So I do struggle with some of the definitions. And I think one of the key ones is waste reduction. I think one of my concerns with food waste is that you basically saying it's okay to waste food. And almost giving people permission where else, ideally, we wouldn't want food waste in the first place and also there's opportunities to deal with that at home if you have a composter or a worm composter, like I have here, I've got a gardener. The deposit return scheme, I do have, I do have concerns with. It's effectively generating a reverse supply chain. And obviously, the food supply chain, many people get their deliveries direct to home. People can't make it to the shop. Some people don't have cars. So what are they going to do with all the build up of, at the moment, all they need to do is put it on there, also if it gets collected, it gets recycled. And I just struggle to see how, somebody now, everybody pitching up in car parks, feeding individual bottles and plastic bowls into these machines that probably won't be plentiful enough. And also the way we do shopping now, where people do small, pre-kept shops on the regular basis. They don't bring all your recycling to work with you, just on the off chance you go stop off, do a quick shop on my hands. So I think there are, there are issues with it. And you also have the potential where you have people emptying bins to collect items and then end up with more rubbish on the street because bins have been emptied. So I do have some concern with that. Tom, do you want to come in?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just listening to your reflections there, I think most of the conclusions you're drawing are reflected in the position that's in the paper. The only exception is the discussion we had around that DRS, which I recognise your concerns over. I just wanted for a mechanism for us to then move forward, if the current position plus or minus of these file that one detail, may I propose an amendment which would just be an insertion of a new 1.2 after 1.1, which would just read instruct officers to reflect a view that household collection does not necessarily negate the value of DRS. I think that's that one point that we discussed that we thought might be a slight misjudgment, what is generally actually reflected in the report, my reading anyway.
Can you say again, please?
Yes, of course. So it would be a warrant to, so in addition to the committee instructs officers to reflect a view that household collection does not necessarily negate the value of DRS.
I just mean, I'm sure that that could be formally limited. And then we can take that through to when we actually get the actual response.
Okay, so you don't feel that needs to be ratified by the council?
I'm happy to mention that it's something you've beautifully expressed and happy to express for you in the minutes.
Yes, just whether, if officers, if that is from this debate, seen as a consensus view, then officers can go forward and reflect this. If we're not sure about that and we want to put it to a vote, that amendment is a mechanism for that. I don't mind how this is done. But what I do want to do is make sure that I don't reflect my officers because it is a consensus view or it's not reflected because it's just a Tom view.
I think the best thing would be to minimize it because the, we're going to have, for example, one of the ones is a hundred and four questions. So it's going to be a lot of answers to lots of very specific detailed questions, but I'm happy to, be happy for it to be minimized.
Well, the minoting doesn't allow officers to then go reflect it. Do you see what I'm saying? It just needs to be in the minutes. If it's the committee's view, then it should be an item of feedback to the officers. I don't know, what's the mechanism here? It's hard to boss us on the Zoom, isn't it? The forward end is, I'll defer to Mark, if you can. I think in the spirit of, I think in the spirit of what we were trying to do in this, bringing to them this attention for a general discussion, to get a general feeling. We just wonder whether, you know, formally limited it, be the formal ranking of that, that we can take away with that. So if officers are happy with that, I'm very happy with that. So that's a good point. Thank you.
No, just a note to me, the fact that that is on.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I just, I mean, I know we've had this discussion, I just wanted to echo what Kev said. But I distinctly remember when I was growing up, back in the seventies. The pop man used to come around to, come around the street, sell his wares. And then two weeks after that, come back and collect those bottles and turn it positive. So I think, you know, DRS, whether it's a counter office or whether it's something that you can have a good bed with on that, is something that should be presumed, I think, is my view. But that's my only contribution.
Okay. Do we have any more contributions? Okay. In that case, we have been happy then to load the recommendations as presented on the paper. Thank you. Okay, so on to Agenda Item Seven, which is a report from officers of ASH diaback. The recommendation of the note is four, and hopefully Nick is still on the end of the Zoom call.
Thank you, Chair. Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Yep, the recommendation of this report is that the committee notes the content of the report, really, containing an overview of the origin of ash diaback, current status in the UK, regionally as well. And it just contains some mitigating actions to help us overcome the fallout from this pathogen. So we did, you know, it's a fair amount of waters passed under the bridges, this was last brought up in Environment Committee. I think there have been a number of members' briefs under Evening Members Seminar Entri's last December. So I just, I thought it was important to give a bit of a detailed background, just for a fresh hour. So and briefly touch on the physiology itself of this pathogen, just because I think that it lends a bit of perception as to what we are dealing with here. So the nature of ash diaback, it's a fungal pathogen which spreads through fungal spores which travel airborne. And notably, this pathogen as well uses something called active pathogenesis. And in simple plain English, that basically means that it finds its own way into a tree. It creates its own doorway into the host and therefore doesn't rely on a previous or pre-existing wound. And what that basically means is that it's really rather indiscriminate. So any age of ash tree, in any place, and it can, you know, reach really any kind of environment as it is windborne, could fall subject to this pathogen. So ash diaback itself originated in Asia. We know that it's been there for a very, very long time. The indigenous population of fractionists or ash in Asia has actually developed genetic resistance to it or some of the fractionist population has. Unfortunately, is not the case in ash trees found in Europe or England. So around thirty years ago, ash diaback made its way into the continent. And since then, it's basically decimated the continent's ash population. And it was first positively identified in England in two thousand and thirty. So due to the nature which I've just described, there's no real stopping this. It would have been very, very challenging to do, to put any sort of mitigating factor or impeding factor in. In the early days, if we had been aware of quite how severe this was going to be, but unfortunately we weren't. So we're now in the stage of having to just live with it and make sure that we minimise the ecological impact of losing one of the UK's third most abundant trees. So we're talking about a very, very large portion of the UK's treescape we're about to lose. Less so in terms of city treescapes. I think county councils are going to have a far worse time of this than city councils. I said, third most abundant tree species there in the UK, but I think that equates to, on average, about four percent of the average city's tree population. So it is going to be very challenging, but fortunately for us, not as challenging as it's going to be for county councils. So, yeah, so the ash population in Worcester City itself, it's fairly spread out. We've got ash trees found on our premier parks, riversides, car parks as well. And most notably, two woodlands in the Warden area. They're predominantly made up of mature ash in plantation form. Fortunately, though, because of a change of management historically from conservation area, it's from plantation world to conservation area, we're starting to see pioneer species come up in the scrub layer of these woodlands. So with a bit of target planting in areas where ash trees happen to be found, we can help mitigate the ecological fallout there quite well. So we're likely to see the biggest loss of ash in the next ten years. And, yeah, so, yeah, it is also very important that we maintain ash trees, retain ash trees as they are at the moment until they're possibly identified with Clara, because there's a small chance that some of the population may be genetically resistant. And it's important to attain those to, you know, ensure the species' existence for the future. So we have brought together some action to move forward with in order to help minimise the financial and ecological impact of ash diaback in Worcester. It's going to, you know, as this problem is developing, it's pretty more and more challenging just because of the nature of the pathogens I've suggested, as I've explained rather. To combat the unpredictability of this, Environmental Operations has recently just procured new bespoke tree inspection software, which is a vast improvement on the software we've been using previously. This drastically increases the accuracy and efficiency of tree inspections across the city, which is going to help me very much in my job. We've also raised the priority level of areas containing ash trees and individual ash trees from whatever they were originally to high, which means they'll be subject now to a six-monthly inspection rotor. So any changes there in the tree's health, we should be able to pick up really, really rather quickly and then action, whatever works needs to be done to make that tree safe. So on that note, it's not fully understood the impact on the structural integrity of an ash tree of Clara. We know that it will eventually succumb and die and therefore make it unstable. But there is research to suggest that once a tree has its, you know, we, as we are not sure will mean that there will have to be changes made to the management methodology we use. So having climbers, say, dismantle the tree may, you know, no longer be accepted or, you know, accepted practice. So we'll have to think of different ways using, say, mukes or straight felling, you know, to try and combat that. So. One second. So during the last six months, using our pre-existing tree surveying software, I've been trying to collate as much data as possible with the ash population we've got at the moment. This is a part that will be featuring in our quarterly performance review on Penta. New plantation, you know, got that. So we, it's a particularly difficult time year as well. We're just coming into, well, we've just gone past spring, ash trees have just come into bloom now. And it's now the time where I need to be out there identifying areas of new infection. And we have had isolated areas of infection across the city. And the most recent one I've seen was in the Bramblewood projects in Lansdowne Road allotments. So there's a very small ash there, and that has been positively identified as having Clara. But a neighbouring tree right next to it, another ash tree, exactly the same size and maturity, had not yet succumbed to that illness. I think that's a bit of a, you know, a bit of an example of just how random, sporadic and hard to predict this pathogen can be. So another approach to gaining an understanding of where we are with Clara in Worcester at the moment is by working closely with partners. So we're keeping open lines of communication with the county councils, the Duffworth Trust, the Canal and River Trust, to just, you know, keep on top of how this develops in terms of within the city. And as this is a developing issue, and because of the sporadic and random nature of the pathogen requires an ad hoc firefighting approach to the problem, members will be briefed annually. But there is also the option of increasing that to a six-month briefing if the pathogen reaches a zenith in Worcester. So that's what we've got there. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for the overview there, Nick. Do we have any contributions on the floor? No, I think the length of the hour is apparent. So thank you, Nick, and we're happy to. Just like recommendation, like report. Thank you very much.
The sound quality is pretty poor coming through. So it's really impossible, I don't know whether I might, I'm more hard of hearing than most people, but I'm picking up about forty percent. If any more contributions have to come from that direction.
That's it, that's it.
Because we are finding there's a lot of what we're struggling to hear, it's actually printed on the report, so.
It's not even how, what the technology was intended.
I appreciate, yeah.
So I do believe that's the last Zoom contribution we've got this evening. So on to Agenda Item Eight, Ontario Roots. So I'm just going to hand over to Lloyd to introduce the site.
Thank you, Chair. Consciously, I was only keeping track of the project at all. Now, we've got a report in front of us to note it, it relates to the Artine Loos Project, which this committee has kept, rained on over the last couple of years. Keep people back to the council motion, the council of Stafford, that kicked this all off. And then that fed through to this committee recommending a budget and to take that work. Paragraph two point six sets out the brief of that project. And then paragraphs two from two through three point eight, a bit in resolve what has been done. And just to remind the members, really, this was a key project of the committee's school card of last year. And we believe, we believe the negative work now has taken, and that project can now be closed out. So brief, Chair, but hopefully the board sets out the details that are clear.
And thank you, Lloyd. So thanks for saying what was a project is now part of normal business. Do you have any comments or questions? Okay, so are we happy to load the recommendation? On to Item, Agenda Item Nine, which is the quarterly performance report. So again, this is for, I'm going to hand over to Lloyd.
Chair, similar baiting now, which is the quarter for, and the annual, the quarter for twenty twenty one, the annual twenty twenty one update on the committee's school cards, so key projects and KPIs. And just to remind members, the key guiding projects on this, that will be a manual replaced for the twenty one, twenty two and financial units. So, Chair, I don't think there's any MP, the projects or KPIs in detail, but Phil and myself have any questions, sorry.
Simon. Couple of things really. There's a few items on here which I think certainly one of them, I'm not sure it should be in the report at all, which is one on the back page, page forty-two. This is about renewals of taxi drivers' licences. I don't know what that's doing on this report, but I'll just part-track one for a second. And there's a couple of others which I think probably come under the same umbrella, which are right at the start of the report, the time and finish recommendations about taxi strategy. The thing that I was really drawn to though is on page thirty, which is that household waste recycling. The description there says consented household waste that is sent to recycling through green drives. My concern, perhaps I'm overly cynical, but when I see something that says sent to recycling, I have visions of it being sent to recycling and ending up being sent to Turkey to a landfill. We don't seem to have any cast iron guarantees that what we put in our green bins actually gets recycled. And I know this isn't the territory of the city council, but as we're collecting this stuff, I think we have a right, I will say, in where it goes. And I wonder if it would be possible as a committee to express an interest in getting some real reassurance, or better still, guarantee that recycling gets recycled.
Thank you, Simon. I think the tax items are a bit what Lloyd was referring to, that will give you a refund from the report. And certainly when I was first a new member on the fire council, we did have an invite to go and visit the patient centre and the incinerator. So I will ask officers to see if we can extend that invitation when COVID situation is like. Speak to several ways. And certainly we have in the past, going back a few years, have a presentation on the other end of the community collection, but actually the whole. So again, certainly happy to look and see how that's best done, whether it's done to part of the visitor, whether we can have a presentation at some point, come to the committee and be able to, you know, see what happens to the waste that's collected from our households. So, you know, we'll look into that.
That would be really interesting. Thanks if you can organise that, I'm sure you'll be interested to take that up. The concern remains about the effectiveness, totality of what we put in the recycling bins needs to be recycled, because that's the basis on which people in Worcester trust that system. And if that trust breaks down, then recycling will stop going in any old bin.
Do you have any further questions or comments on the fourth report? Neil?
I'm just thankful to everyone who's been able to get on so many different.
Working on, just thank you to everyone who's been able to get on so many different disparate projects during lockdown. And I appreciate some deadlines we missed, but I'm pleased to see that someone was on track. I just want to say thank you to officers. Really difficult times, a lot of interesting, exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
And if you get This is starting to skew it, Robbie Martin, give me a stop while we get that. So any more than, than perhaps, we know just that they, I tell you, proved the great swaying of grass hadn't been cut. And it's obviously by design. Is that a policy I'll test on?
Chair, in looking into that, we are getting a frequent number of requests from, you know, residents groups, councillors, and the groups to leave land of the wild, and then initially taking schools. But I don't know about that particular case, so I can check that. I'm not sure about that for such a picture.
Thank you, Chair. What's going on in the show, in the photograph?
Louise?
Just following up on my analyst's assumption, is it possible to get some communications from council regarding things like no-no-nay and cutting of grass verge? Because I had issues in my willing to be with this. And for every one person who wants us to be grass verge, there's 10 people that want to know, some people accepting. So if we could get something from council to say there are areas that we're not knowing for biodiversity, that would be great. Because we might have to stop voting as well. That's the matter.
Okay, Lloyd, you have to make a note. But I think it is an interesting point. Some areas lend themselves to it, other areas might, might result in areas in the city with scruffy and resulting complaints. So it is a balancing act. And then hopefully we can have a good policy to balance this.
Can I make a claim? I'm not complaining. Actually, I've got a photograph here with all the natural drivers. It's done in a swain. It's obviously done to it very well.
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, we, we had quite a large project in planting wild flowers in the, so we continue with that on a more natural basis.
The record for each, first time we come, we're not having rights.
Do we, do we have any other comments, questions? No? Okay, then. So we're happy to note the recommendation, agenda item nine. No items of any other business. So on that note, I close the meeting. Thank you very much for your attention, your patience, and earlier.